Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Michael Mannion. I have the pleasure of serving as the city's Community Relations Director, and I'd like to be the first to welcome here this evening to our 2023 inauguration of newly-elected officials. If we could ask everyone to please clear the entrance, we will have our color guard coming in shortly, and we'll be getting the ceremonies just momentarily. And as we mentioned earlier, we do have overflow seating in the Southfield Pavilion. You can watch the inauguration ceremonies in there should anyone need extra seating in this pavilion. That is available. Again, I'd like to welcome on everyone here this evening. We have a great program in store for you as we swear on our newly-elected officials. A ceremony will follow in the Southfield Pavilion. We will have a strolling reception. We hope everyone can join us for that as well, immediately following the ceremonies this evening. With that, I would like to bring in the color guard, and we will get the procession started.
At this time, I would like to give everybody a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my own pleasure to introduce Ms. Kimmy Horn, who will sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare and the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Could we please hear another warm round of applause for Ms. Horn and that beautiful rendition of the National Anthem? Thank you very much. It is now my pleasure to bring up our Master of Ceremonies this evening, none other than Mr. Charlie Langton, Legal Analyst with Fox Two News Detroit.
Sit, 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 sit. Jeez, I got the... Oh, my gosh. This is a... Wow, I've got the Council President right in front of me. Yikes, I can't make any mistakes. Ah, thank you for coming, first of all. This is a really... It's my honor to be here today. I am thrilled. This is great. Let's start off with an invocation. Rabbi Star, Congregation of Shari Zedek. Rabbi?
In this week of Thanksgiving, we give thanks for and we celebrate our fellow citizens elected to lead our city and to care for our fellow residents. Let us pray that our leadership be granted the knowledge to help us live together and to work together, and may each of them be granted the patience to help us to speak with, and even more importantly, to listen to one another. In a world torn by violence and war, suffering and sadness, may we all remember that the sacred work of peace, of seeking peace, begins with pursuing justice and offering compassion, including and especially for those among us who have long suffered injustices, prejudice, and discrimination; for those among us suffering from food insecurity and loneliness; as well as the unhoused and the homeless, the poor and the ill. Heavenly parent, grant us wisdom that we may begin to use faith, hope, kindness, understanding, and love as a vaccine against the diseases of anger, fear, and discrimination injuring our body politic. May we wake up each day invigorated, healthy, and emboldened to work together with all our fellow Americans to set us on a path for all our fellow Americans toward life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. May we know gratitude for all who have worn uniforms and who have defended our right to vote and to participate in a free society. May we be empowered to stand up together as one nation against the forces of radicalism to the left and to the right, and may our elected officials, law enforcement, military, and the courts know that the American way of life depends upon their commitment to upholding justice and offering compassion. May we unite with renewed efforts to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to battle crime and terrorism, and to pursue justice. Creator above, bless us, our children, and especially the vulnerable among us, with health, and bless all of us and our land with healing. May each of our council members, city employees, volunteers, and all of us know long life, great prosperity, and a day when each and every person shall sit under his or her vine and fig tree that none shall make us afraid. Indeed, may we partner with the one who makes peace in the heavens above so that peace, true and lasting peace, will be known by all of us on earth below, and let us say, amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Star, for those words. We have a number of dignitaries here. This is Southfield after all, so of course we're going to have a lot of dignitaries. Yes! Look at that. They're packed in the hallway, waiting to get in. Like a Taylor Swift concert or something. No. Anyway, I'm going to read your names. If you could stand, please, and then we'll acknowledge everyone at the end, the dignitaries, okay? U.S. Representative Rashida Tlaib is here. That's close enough. That's all right. State Senator Jeremy Moss. A state representative... I said senator, right? Okay, good. State Representative Jason Hoskins. Council President Michael Ari Mandelbaum. Council President pro tempel, Lenny Taylor. Councilwoman Nancy Banks. Councilman Daniel Brightwell. Councilwoman Coretta Hoag. Councilman Charles Hicks. Do we count or is that not... City Clerk Janet Jackson. City Treasurer Irv Lowenberg. City Administrator Fred Zorn. And Chief Judge Sheila Johnson. I love Southfield. Anyway, we have a number of other people here. I was going to say all the other... Any other judges here? Any other judges? Did I miss anybody? I don't want to miss anybody. There are also some former city council members here. If you are, stand up. If you're a former city council member... In fact, if you're a city council member from any city, stand up. There you go. Also, we have members of the Southfield Public School Board. They are here, I think. Anyone from the school board? There you are in the back. If you've ever been on the school board. Any city. We'll take anyone. Thank you. Any other elected officials that I missed? I'm sorry if I did. If you're an elected official, just stand up. All right. Thank you. No, no, no. We don't... We're not going to forget the mayor. But he is an elected official, I guess. All right. Thank you. See, I love Southfield. Anyway, ah... That was going to introduce the mayor, but we already did. It is my pleasure now to introduce the Chief Judge of the Southfield District Court, first elected back in November of 2002. She's the first African... I know. Wow. And that's 20-some-odd years you've been... That's incredible. Actually, you may be the longest-serving district judge. You're up there, if you're not. You're up there. We're going to see to it that you are, okay? It's good. Anyway, you were reelected in 2014 and '21, and then she currently serves as the Chief Judge of this court. She is the most popular Chief Judge in Southfield. Come on up, Judge Sheila Johnson.
Well, it's hard to come after an introduction like that. But anyway, good evening, everyone. And I just wanted to say on an occasion like this that it just really brings to mind the words of the former Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, the Honorable Shirley Chisholm, a member of Delta Sigma Theta sorority, by the way, who said... She coined that phrase that service is the rent that you pay for your room on this earth. And so, elected office is an honorable position and the highest form of service that one can aspire to give to one's community. And to Nancy L.M. Banks and Daniel Brightwell and to Michael Ari Mandelbaum, who are returning to subsequent terms on city council, the citizens have acknowledged your past performance and that you have, so to speak, paid your rent to the community on time and in abundance. And they have given you their highest regard and approval by reelecting you to make the most difficult legal and moral decisions about the quality of life in the city of Southfield. To Charles Hicks, newly-elected member of city council, and to Coretta Hoag, who has served, but has... This is her first election as a newly-elected member of the city council. And then to my friend, new city clerk Janet Jackson. Based upon all of your platforms, your platforms, your ideals, your principles, and your experiences, the citizens have also elected you as their newest fiduciaries. They have imparted to you their utmost trust and confidence that you all will pay your rent and will perform your duties with distinction and that you will strive to hear the collective voices of the community and that you will make those difficult decisions with conscious deliberation. All of you must stand strong in your convictions, even in the face of adversity, and you must take the stand that you believe to be just, not just in your personal interest, but in the best interest of your electorate. As each of you takes this oath this evening, I charge you to recall all that you felt when you embarked upon your first run for office, whether it be this year or in years past. And I know, Nancy, you guys have run a few times and been successful. But remember how you felt that first time. I charge you to remember the enthusiasm, the sense of purpose, the commitment, the dedication, the idealism, the drive to effect positive changes, and most importantly, the sense of accountability to those that you represent. I encourage you to use these ideals as beacons of light that continue to guide you as you address the myriad and often difficult issues that will come before you all that relate to maintaining the city of Southfield as one of the most economically sound, well-run, and vibrant communities in this state. It is an honor and a privilege to install each of you into office this evening, and I congratulate you all on your election. And I give you my warmest regards and best wishes as you go forth to serve. And I now will call forth, starting with some of the council persons first. And I believe first on the list is Councilwoman Nancy L.M. Banks. Just making sure. Whichever. Right here? All right. Repeat after me, Ms. Banks. I state your name.
I, Nancy Banks.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
The City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
Of the Office of
Of the Office of
City Council
City Council.
In and for the city of Southfield
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
And State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We have some signing to do here. So I got these cards. I'll give it to you. And they'll tell you probably what to give. And we have a couple copies left over. Might need to sign another two. All right. But next up, in alphabetical order, Dan Brightwell. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Brightwell.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of
Of the Office of
City Council
City Council.
In and for the city of Southfield
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. There you go. We'll sign both of them. I'll get Nancy's second copy, too. There's one more behind that. Thank you. Sign it here. Mm-hmm. Got it. That's what we're doing. Mm-hmm. There you go. And next, Mr. Charles Hicks. We know there's some frats in the house. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Charles Hicks.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform
And that I will faithfully perform
the duties of the Office of City Council.
The duties of the Office of City Council.
In and for the city of Southfield.
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. One more.
Thank you.
Hold on. Let me sign it for you. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Next. Next up is Ms. Coretta Hoag. I state your name.
I, Coretta Hoag.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of
And I will faithfully perform the duties of
The Office of City Council.
The Office of City Council.
In and for the city of Southfield.
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Get right here. Got one more? And I'll sign this. All right. Next up is Michael Ari Mandelbaum. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Ari Mandelbaum.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of
And I will faithfully perform the duties of city council.
In and for the city of Southfield.
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And one more here. And there you go. Last but not least, Janet Jackson. And repeat after me. I state your name.
Janet Jackson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Clerk.
And I will faithfully perform the duties in the Office of City Clerk.
In and for the city of Southfield.
In and for the city of Southfield.
County of Oakland
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. Congratulations. And I'll sign over here. Congratulations. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
And we'll have one more. All right. It's been my honor and pleasure, and congratulations again to all of you.
Let's give a big hand to the judge. Thank you, Judge. But let's give a big hand, one big round of applause for the newly-elected officials here in Southfield.
Okay, please be seated.
Now, we have... We're never going to forget the mayor of Southfield. No way. I didn't know Mayor Dr. Kinson Cyver. That's your form? That's wild. We'd like to have the mayor say a few words. Mayor?
Well, good evening, everyone, on this very special occasion. I extend my congratulations to the folks sitting before me, re-elected council persons Nancy Banks, Daniel Brightwell, and Ari Mandelbaum, and to Coretta Hoag and Charles Hicks on their election to city council, and to Janet Jackson on her election as the fifth city clerk of the city of Southfield. As of this night, we begin a new city council term. The year ahead promises to bring continued growth and progress to the city of Southfield. New housing projects will advance at Northland, at Nine Mile and LaShire, on Hooper and Garner Streets, and with the adaptive reuses of the city of Southfield. And with the adaptive reuses of McKinley and John Grace Schools. The former school as a market, at market-rate condominiums, and the latter as much-needed subsidized senior housing. In all, hundreds of new housing units will come online during twenty twenty-four and twenty-five. The Northland City Center project is advancing steadily. If you haven't driven down, uh, Greenfield Road, uh, or Northwestern Highway, uh, it's amazing, uh, what is taking place there. The first apartment leases will be signed, uh, in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Costco expects to open its doors, uh, in January. And an announcement of another major retailer is imminent. Uh, a host of neighborhood businesses, they've been pre-leased, will begin occupying the ground floor of the apartment buildings that face Evergreen or Greenfield Road. And the construction of the new Northland Police Substation is expected to get underway in the year ahead. You know, we can never do enough infrastructure improvements. Uh, our need is greater funding. We need to continue to press our legislators, uh, legislative representatives in Lansing to address Act Fifty-One, uh, funding for roads. The formula needs to change. In the coming year, we will continue to repave neighborhood streets to the tune of about sixteen million. Now, that's a lot, but it's not enough. Already approved for the current year are Washington Heights and Sherwood Village West Neighborhoods. And, uh, funding for the repaving and road diet of Nine Mile between Evergreen and LaShir is in place. And speaking of a self-inflicted priority for our representatives in Lansing, we ask that they set limits on the number of group homes the state licenses in each community. Our residents are feeling. Our residents are feeling overburdened and are looking for a more equitable approach to the placement of community mental health facilities. Pathways and placemaking will continue. We've done a lot over the last decade. In the next year, the Beechwood Pathway, uh, is between Nine Mile and Shiahawassee is funded and is set to begin. The Nine Mile Corridor Improvement Project from I seventy-five to two seventy-five will be getting another boost from SEMCOG and from Oakland County. A major art installation at Nine Mile and Southfield Roads will begin in the spring as part of this effort. With an, uh, improving tax base in, in our DDA, uh, that's the Northland area, we hope to see continued infrastructure improvements, including North Park Drive and Rutland Street. New public art installations will grace the corners of Ten Mile and Northwestern Highway on the campus of Lawrence Tech. And at Nine Mile and Beach Roads. Park improvements are advancing. We hope to have our first dog park installed at LaShir Woods Park this year. Carpenter Lake, uh, Phase Two improvements are moving forward by spring. A new, uh, educational shell, outdoor shelter, uh, and restrooms will be in place. Uh, the agreement, um, for an infusion, a major infusion of, uh, funding for Beechwoods Park has, um, reached, uh, been reached with Oakland County Parks and Recreation. Trails, additional parking, and an additional picnic, picnic shelter are coming to Beechwoods. We hope in twenty twenty-four, we will find a path forward, uh, for the replacement of our municipal swimming pool. We know what we want, but we have to come to a conclusion as how we are going to pay for it. Shortly, we will be having another meeting with, uh, the Go Fish Swim Company for perhaps a public-private partnership. Uh, along with the proposed improvements at, um, at the civics, to the civic center, particularly updated spaces, security, and ADA compliance issues, we, uh, we are, uh, have a plan for, uh, making this building, uh, various improvements to this building. And, uh, it may be in conjunction with the Middle Point Ever Center development, uh, directly across the street. Our partnership with Lawrence Technological University has grown and strengthened over the last decade. We will continue to find more ways to collaborate with the university and with OCC and Southfield Schools. And we will be waiting to see what develops with our largest employer, Providence Hospital. At this time, we have very little information as to how the joint venture agreement between Henry Ford Health and Ascension Michigan will develop. The joint venture is said to bring together Ascension's Southeast Michigan and Genesis Healthcare Facilities and assets, uh, with those of Henry Ford's. They state that this agreement will allow both organizations to advance health in our, in their, in the communities they serve and improve the outcomes, the access, and the equity. In the pipeline for consideration by the Planning Commission and the City Council are a host of new projects, rezonings, and business proposals. Businesses continue to want to invest in Southfield. And while the office market remains in flux, we are seeing a significant rise in the number of people back at work, especially judging from the uptick of rush hour traffic and the number of cars in parking lots. So I remain very optimistic about Southfield's future. We have weathered storms before. We have always faced into our challenges. And once again, I have faith that this new council, uh, new council term will be one of great progress and reinvestment. And once again, congratulations to you all. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, two more years of working with both, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's, uh, we're not quite done with the program, but let's finish this part of the program, um, with the Reverend Andrea Dudley for the benediction. Reverend?
What a fabulous ceremony we've had this evening. Congratulations, everyone. There is a time and a season for everything. For every beginning, there's an ending. For every memory, there's a dream ahead. As we conclude this inauguration ceremony, may we forever be in awe of all that had to happen in our lives to be here right now. May we walk the walk of compassion and bring compassion to the li, the center of our lives. And may Southfield be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose water never fails providing water to those who are hungry and thirsty. May we cultivate the capacity to see the humanity and dignity of everyone, even those we disagree with. And to treat all people, no matter how different, with the reverence they deserve. May we become repairers of the breach, setting the captive free. May we live a purpose bigger than ourselves, understanding that when we do, you and I will begin to transcend our limitations and discover ourselves to be far greater than we ever imagined. May we recognize that our lives will not be measured by the titles we carry, but by the number of hearts we heal and the lives we transform. May we be vigilant such that in our toil and labor of service, our hearts don't become hardened. Our eyes don't become blind, that we don't forget where we came from, nor neglect those we are meant to serve. May we realize that change doesn't magically happen, that everything worthy requires effort and sacrifice. That in order to accomplish things we've never accomplished, to become people we've never been, we must make sacrifices we've never made and do things we've never done. May we always be mindful that the thoughts we dwell on become us and that everything you and I put out into the world is going to come back. Indeed, we will do it, it will be done, it's already done. May we walk away from this gathering determined to find ways to live an inspired life, absorb the inspiration of others, and become an inspiration. Finally, may we all walk away with the will and courage to move beyond ourselves and leave our noble mark on our beloved community, our city, Southfield, the United States of America, and all of our earth. Now, go in peace and let us rebuild the walls of our beloved city. You are dismissed.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, one more time, Reverend, thank you. I think before we go, though, we want to see the City Council in action, right? Yeah, everyone want to see the City Council. City Council, could you stand up and take your seats? I think there's some business to take care of before we go, right?
Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in Council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council, um, Pro Tem, um, Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Banks.
Present.
Council. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks, again. Present.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Cruz. Um, Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum, we have a quorum. Oh, I'm so sorry. Our newest, most recently elected Councilman, Charles Hicks.
Present.
Thank you. Council President, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. We will now move to the communications portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or City Council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or City Council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the City Council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the City Council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. The first speaker is Joseph Person.
Thank you. I'm used to speaking to the City Council, not to the people. Ladies and gentlemen, I am so proud tonight of a new history that we're starting here. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Southfield Laker Village Democratic Club for what we did in terms of getting various people elected, voting down, voting down a proposal one and two. But we are happy. The other thing is, I'm proud of meeting my City Councilwoman, Coretta Hoag. I dealt with her and her family for seven AM to eight o'clock that night on Election Day. Her son is awesome. Her girlfriend Renee is awesome, but that sister Kimberly and that son are something else, you know? Incredible people, want to work with the Democratic Club, want to work, oh, I forgot Denise. I forgot Denise, because she's something else, too. But I just want to say, as Democrats, it's okay for us to fight and disagree. It's okay, folks, even though I know this was for nonpartisan seats. All I want to say at the end of this, how about them Democrats?
Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening to all of you. God is good all the time, and all the time he is good. You know, we had an election and the election ended. I want all of you that voted for that proposal, one and two, to remember what was said to you, that if you don't vote for it, you will lose your right to vote. That wasn't true. That it was voter oppression. That wasn't true. And that for someone to be appointed, that your vote didn't count. I want you to remember that. And I want you to remember who promoted that proposal, one and two, to say, vote no. So when that person comes back and talks about someone else being appointed to council, I want you to say the same thing, that that person would need to run for office and not be appointed. Remember how you voted. We are the only city in Oakland County that still elects a treasurer and a clerk. It was one office, three people. One person was eliminated at a cost of ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, you just let that marinate, and I'm gonna shut it off right now. And you just heard that from PG. Who is that out there?
Please, excuse me.
Is that Bill Lattimore?
Please let her speak.
Convicted felon? Thank you.
Please, excuse me. Let's have respect for all the speakers, please. That concludes our communications portion of the meeting. Next, we move on to the election of officers. The first officer that we will, um, elect is the council president, and we will accept nominations from the floor.
Council, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to nominate, um, Michael Ari Mandelbaum as council president.
Are there any other nominations? All right, it has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to nominate Councilman Mandelbaum, um, as council president. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, our next nomination is for President Pro Tem, and we'll accept nominations from the floor. the floor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I nominate Nancy, Councilwoman Nancy Banks.
Is there a second? All right, any other nominations?
Charles Hicks, I nominate Lenny Taylor.
Is there a second for that?
I can't support myself. I shouldn't.
You can, if you want.
Oh, I'll support myself.
Okay.
I don't want to leave the chair.
So we have two nominations, we will vote on each one. The first one is, was a motion by Councilwoman Hoag.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
I'm sorry.
I support.
I thought you made, you made the motion. He supported. There was a nomination by Councilwoman Hoag, Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to nominate Councilwoman Banks as Pro Tem. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
Yes, thank you. Starting with Council President Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Taylor? Councilperson Hicks? Councilperson Taylor? I'm sorry, Councilperson Hoag?
Yes.
Yes. Councilperson Banks?
Yes.
Councilperson Brightwell? We have four yeses and two nays.
All right, so that, that motion passes?
Motion passes, carry.
And the second motion dies for lack of votes, and we have our President Pro Tem for this next year as Councilwoman Banks. Now I'd like to call on each of the newly elected officials to say a few words, and we'll start with our newest elected official, Mr. Charles Hicks. Councilman Charles Hicks.
Thank you, President Mandelbaum. First of all, giving glory and honor to God is truly head of my life. I'd like to thank my parents, Charles and Bessie, my bonus mom Sharon, my other bonus moms, Nadine, Penny. I'd like to thank my wife, who's allowed me to serve our city, take up the slack for the household while I'm out doing what I do. I'd like to thank my children for continually moving our family forward. I'd like to thank our community. During the campaign, I mentioned that I was raised here, I stayed here, and I served here. And as a proud member of Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, one of our objectives is to inspire service to the public's interests and to have honorable achievement in every field of human endeavor. And with those things that were taught to me, that were instilled in me, I plan to continue to do to continually move our city forward. And I ask that you work with us, and I'm proud to be part of this team, to work to improve continually our city. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. I'll just keep this short and brief. First of all, I would like to thank all the voters for re-electing me again. It is truly an honor to serve each and every one of you. To my wonderful family, I couldn't have done it without you. All your love and support and encouragement has guided me through many, many elections in this beautiful city. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I'm totally happy to be here, and I enjoy this job, and this is my third inauguration. And I've been extremely productive, and I promise to be extremely productive. I have several quantifiable objectives that have been achieved, and some very highly-profile objectives have been achieved. And some of my objectives, some of my accomplishments will be impacting this city for the next 10 to 15 years. So I'm glad to be here, and I sincerely thank all the voters who have supported me. And I do, I do this every time, and probably be getting an old hat, but I want to sincerely thank the woman that I love who supported me.
Thank you. Thank you to, first of all, my heavenly Father as well, give him all the glory and the praise. To my cousin, Reverend Beer Dutley, I love you. Thank you for being here for us all. I have so many people to thank, and I don't want to take up much time, but I can't let this opportunity go by without I thanking my family. My parents are no longer here with me, but I have to thank, first of all, starting with my oldest sister Donna. Her husband Johnny, I think I saw Johnny. My sister Lori, Melinda, Kim, my niece Victoria, and the man in my life, my son, my one and only, I call him Pudgy. Lester, and his love of Lou. And I just thank every, all the council people up here. Mr. Person, I thank you for acknowledging me and my family. I've known you for years, and even though we would have been on the opposite side, we're gonna always come back together because one thing, we both serve. And so I thank you for your leadership, and I'm always open for criticism. I'm looking forward to working with Councilman Hicks, continue working with my colleagues here, and to our newest clerk, whatever you need from me, I'm there for you to support you as well. Thank you.
I, I mentioned the woman I love, I forgot to, I didn't forget, but I did not mention her name. Judge, retired Judge Leonie Lloyd. And so, thank you sir.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to say, we all up here, we work together. And I motion for Nancy Banks to be our Pro Tem, and I believe in that, but I also support you Lenny as well. So just to let everybody know, we work collectively together here. We can all do the job, and we'll do it together. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you. I just want to welcome everyone back, say congratulations on a very well-run election. Congratulations to our clerk. I'm looking forward to working with you as well. Mr. Hicks, thank you for your nomination, thank you for your trust in me and the confidential calls that we had. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. My sincerest congratulations to each one. Thank you, Councilwoman Coretta Hoag. We are fine. We work very well together. That's what we do here, we're a team, we're all on the same team, working towards the same goal, which is to make Southfield a destination, not a pass-through. That's what we do. Thank you.
First, I want to thank my colleagues for putting their trust in me to lead them in another year as the Council President. I appreciate the trust, and I will lead us faithfully through this next year with all the wonderful things that the mayor outlined are coming through the city, plus much, much more that we are working on. I want to thank Councilwoman Taylor for her past year as Pro Tem, working side by side with me, for everything that we did to make sure the meetings ran smoothly, and being my sounding board when we needed, I needed some extra help. And welcome to Councilwoman Banks as Pro Tem, and I look forward to working with you over this next year as well. Welcome to our newest Councilman, Charles Hicks. As, as it was mentioned, we all work well together. We welcome you aboard to the council family and look forward to your input in our council decisions. And again, welcome and congratulations to our city clerk, Janet Jackson. Welcome aboard. And of course, Mr. Mayor and our city treasurer, we, I'll look forward to working with you as well. I also want to thank my family, my parents could not be here this evening, they are having too much fun in sunny Florida. But my children who, who campaigned with me, knocking door to door, standing outside the polls with me, I'd like to acknowledge them. Allison, Emma, and Zachary, stand up. They are one of the many reasons why I continue to work on the City Council, because I want to make Southfield the premier destination, and I always have them in mind as they are the future generation. This fall, I asked for your votes to keep me on the Southfield City Council, because I wanted to continue to fight to keep our city diverse, make it more walkable, attract younger families with affordable housing, great schools, and community activities. For the past eight years, I've had the privilege to serve you. Now for the next two years, I will continue to serve you. Thank you for your vote. It's time to go to work. I will now turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, and I so appreciate the comments that all of you on council have made. I truly look forward to become part of this elected body, and I am a bridge builder. I am going to approach this position with all the positivity, caring, and love that I have for this city. As you guys know, my name is Janet Jackson, a lot of performers do a call and response, and I just wanted you to respond after me. We love Southfield.
We love Southfield.
Better than that, we love Southfield.
We love Southfield.
Thank you. And with that zeal upon which I want to serve in this position as city clerk, and I know that I'm in good hands with the employees in the clerk's office, and I know that we can continue to get better and better and serve our public in the way it deserves. So I thank you, and I thank you all for coming tonight and being part of the city that we what? We love.
Love.
Thank you. One more thing, I didn't give thanks to my family. Thank you so much for my family, for all of your support in this endeavor and all the endeavors in the past. I know that you have believed in me even when I didn't believe in myself. And without your help and the Lord upon which I depend on every single, every moment of the day, this could, would not have been possible. So thank you, much appreciation and love, and glory to God.
Amen.
All right, I will continue going out of order here, but our city treasurer?
Thank you very much, and I'd like to also welcome aboard all our newest elected officials. Definitely major, major responsibility as city clerk, Ms. Jackson, but I know that you'll be able to step forward and, and give it your full energy, and I wish you much success in your position, as well as also Councilman Hicks. And I know that your dedication and your enthusiasm will, will carry forward. And so, we faced some very challenging financial times over the years that I've been here in 18 years, so I've seen good times and challenging times, and then now we're fortunate to, to still keep that prosperity and the discipline that the council has worked very hard to maintain, and the economic development and, and the growth that the city has had. And we hope, and I wish continued prosperity to all our residents, to all our businesses, and everyone in Southfield. Thank you very much. And also, most of all, I'd like to thank my wife and my children for their, for allowing me to dedicate my life to serving the needs of everyone in Southfield. And my heart is with everyone over here. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve you, and look forward to it for many more years.
Before we move on to the next person, I did want to also give another thanks for stepping up to our former Councilman Myron Frazier, who came in a time of need and stepped up and came back to City Council for us. So thank you. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you. On behalf of myself and the administration and 600-plus employees, we want to congratulate all of you. Want to recognize the city clerk and her office staff, volunteers, part-timers for one, putting together and one, operating and putting together a outstanding election. We're excited. This is a very unique time in our democracy, and our process carries forward. There are lots of challenges and opportunities before us, working together in a unified front. The management team here is committed to making sure that we continue to love Southfield. It's a great place to, to be, and it's a premier city, and let's continue to keep our spot in, in southeastern Michigan. We have so much to offer the region and this country, and I think many of you know the types of things we're working on, from our diversity and equity and inclusion activities, to what we're doing in sustainability, our economic development fronts, our housing activities, rebuilding our infrastructure, our premier police and fire departments, our public works department is outstanding, the level of services that we provide, what we offer in our recreational services. We've just completed $2.5 million in investment in our parks. Council has us scheduled to do another $6 million plus dog park finally happening, but we have challenges, and there are those who want to nitpick and tell us there are things that divide us. Let us stay united and just continue to make Southfield the premier city we are. Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening. I just want to say congratulations to Councilman Hicks, Councilwoman Hoag, and all the rest of the council members. It's always been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to working with you again, and just wish you the best, and also to our new clerk, look forward to working with you also. Thank you.
All right, and last but certainly not least, Mr. Mayor?
Just want to congratulate and thank both you and Ms. Taylor for leading the council this, this last year. Did a great job with that. And I've already done my round of congratulations, so I don't want to stand between the reception and...
But we, we do have a...
Oh, I thought you were going to ask, is there any other business?
Well, is there any other business?
All right, there is. There is some other business.
And I'm going to ask Allison Bettis to come forward. I hate to have my back to people, so I'm going to stand kind of sideways, if that's all right.
So, Allison, we have something for you this evening. This is a joint resolution from the council, the mayor and council, in honor of Deputy City Treasurer Allison Bettis. Whereas Allison Bettis has served as the Southfield Deputy City Treasurer since 2018, coming to our community after more than 20 years as a treasurer, city clerk in Garden City, Michigan. And whereas, when the Southfield City Clerk's position became vacant in 2002, Ms. Bettis stepped up to serve in both the capacity of deputy treasurer as well as city clerk. She did double duty. Whereas Deputy Treasurer Bettis, along... Whereas Deputy Treasurer Bettis, a longtime resident of Southfield, has served dutifully as the Southfield City Clerk until a new successor was elected this month. As of this day, she shall no longer serve as the appointed city clerk and will remain in her regular position as Deputy City Treasurer. And whereas Deputy City Treasurer Bettis is a graduate of the University of Detroit Mercy with a master's in business administration, emphasizing taxation, as well as a bachelor of science in business administration, majoring in finance and business economics from Wayne State University. She is the recipient of several National Professional Association accreditations, including Certified Municipal Finance Administrator that she received in August of 1995, Certified Government Financial Manager in November of 1995, and Certified Municipal Clerk in 2005. And whereas, Ms. Bettis is a graduate of Central Michigan University Center for Public Service, Michigan Municipal Treasurers Institute Basic and Advanced, has served as the past president of the Wayne County Treasurers Association, vice president of the Association of Wayne County Clerks, a trustee of the Garden City Business Alliance, and a member of the Garden City Kiwanis Club. And whereas Deputy City, Deputy Treasurer Bettis serves under the direction of the elected city treasurer, where she assists in the day-to-day operation of the office, which includes the collection, safekeeping, and allocation of all city revenues, including real and personal property taxes, highway revenues, federal and state grants, and other revenues and special assessments, fees, licenses, and water revenues. That's a lot. In cooperation with the assessing department, fiscal services, and other departments, she facilitates the efficient and accurate flow of financial information in timely reporting, as well as recruitment, development, and management of a staff of seven in coordination with property tax collection for all taxing units located in the city, totaling over $170 million. So whereas, the city council, mayor, and administration, I know I'm embarrassing you, are extremely grateful, we are, and appreciative of Ms. Bettis for assuming these extra duties for nearly a year, so that the city clerk's office could continue to operate efficiently and smoothly. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize the contributions and commitment of Deputy City Treasurer Bettis, and do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2023, as Allison Bettis Day in the city of Southfield. Would you like to...
This is a surprise, and...
You deserve it.
I thank you so very much. It is my privilege, and, and I didn't know that I was gonna be here. I thought I was gonna be a teacher and journalist. I'm still calling you. So public service is what God had for me. Everything that I am, everything that I've done is because of Vivian and Alphonse Bettis, my parents. And I got a super crew, I got two super crews. I got crew in treasury, I got a crew in the clerk's office, and my department heads and colleagues who always just have them at back and everything. So this is super cool, and thank you very, very much. I never had a day...
Our city treasurer wanted to add a couple of words.
Allison, Ms. Bettis, I'd like to offer my congratulations as well for, one day is truly not enough to honor you with, but I left off your, as part of my thank yous, but, because I knew that this was going to be a surprise over here, so I wanted to keep with the theme of that. But definitely, you are the vital pillar in our department at the treasurer's office, and you've been able to maintain both responsibilities wholeheartedly and solidly throughout the entire time. You ran the elections with early voting and everything for the first time without a flaw. And so definitely, we appreciate everything that you do at the treasurer's office and for the city of Southfield as well. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, in addition to everything that's been said about Allison, and I've dealt with a lot of individuals over my life in corporate America, but this is one of the finest things I can probably say about a person. Allison is one of the, a joy to work with, and I've, obviously, my interaction with her are situational, but she, in addition to getting things done, she's a real joy to work with, and I would have worked with you in any part of my prior life or this life. So really, thank you, Allison. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else to come before this council? Just a note, when I adjourn the meeting, don't leave just yet. All right, but this meeting is adjourned.